Good evening, like to call to order the Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. Wall Township Public Schools Business Meeting, please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smythe, could we have the sunshine statement and roll call, please?
Yes, this is the Wall Township Board of Education meeting for which adequate notice under the Open Public Meeting Act was provided by a notice to the CoStar Asbury Park Press. All Wall Township Public Schools are posting in the Township Administration Office and the Board Administration Office on January 6th, 2022. Take a roll call, Mr. Buffa?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Hodnett?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Nasser?
Here.
Mr. Sam Filippo?
Here.
Ms. Stites?
Here.
Mr. Wondrack?
Here.
Ms. Adenizio?
Here. At this time, could I have a motion to go into executive session?
Make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Sam Filippo, second. Mr. Wondrack, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nope. Okay, we will be back at approximately 7:30 PM. Like to reconvene the Wall Township Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. Mr. Smythe, roll call, please.
Mr. Buffa?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Hodnett?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Nasser?
Here.
Mr. Sam Filippo?
Here.
Ms. Stites?
Here.
Mr. Wondrack?
Here.
Mr. Adenizio?
Here. All right. We're going to move right on to conversation about the district's new website and social media. So, Dr. Handerhan, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Adenizio. It's my pleasure to introduce you, or probably reintroduce you, because she has certainly presented before, is Ms. Heather Daniel. She is presenting this evening. She is our District Supervisor of Instructional Technology and Digital Communications. And I'm hoping that the public this evening has had a chance to visit our new district website. There's, I can say there are a tremendous amount of work has gone into it, and I thank her very, very much. And I would also like to thank Karen McGowan for all of her hard work as well, too. So, Ms. Daniel, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Okay, thank you so very much. For you, hello. I will speak very loudly. Can everyone here in the audience hear me? Dave, are you able to hear me? Wonderful. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is my pleasure, as we may, to unveil our new Wall Township Public Schools website. The website went live on August 15th. And today, I'm going to highlight some features of this website that were significant improvements over our previous website. If you can't hear me, please let me know, and I will speak louder. So, our website now is posted under a new domain, wallpublicschools.org. From this time forward, all new content will be available on the wallpublicschools.org This translates to no new content will be added to the wall.k12 nj.us website. However, that website remains live until October 4th. There are several links from the new website that link to the old website while we're finalizing content migration. Similarly, the emails have transferred over to the domain wallpublicschools.org. The username remains the same for staff and for students. So, my username is haniel@wallpublicschools.org. Student usernames will remain the same, the first three letters of the student's first name with their last name at wallpublicschools.org. Our Google environment contains the information within the wall.k12 nj.us email environment as well as within the Google Drive resource environment. So, the content transfers over from the K12 to the wallpublicschools.org domain. New website highlights. I'll be showing the live highlights in a moment. More dynamic multimedia components. And as said in previous presentations, and again, this process has been a several year-long process with feedback from multiple stakeholders. So, these website highlights have been collaborative building. Multimedia components that are expansive beyond our wall.k12 nj.us website. Streamlines and standard navigation across all of our eight district websites, including my want-to feature, global icons, a translate feature, navigable spotlight headline features, streamlined channel system for easier navigation, a robust calendar system, search capabilities via keyword, increased PTO booster and community engagement opportunities. I have been in contact with multiple stakeholders and am looking to engage with PTOs across the district to continue to help build their presence in our Wall Township Public Schools, including physical organizations and outside community organizations. Streamlined students and family resources. And finally, a community feedback form specific to our Wall Township Public Schools website so that our community has a voice in both content editing as well as writing. Before we move to social media, I'd like to give you the live look at our new website. So, when you land on our website, you will notice that we have multimedia capabilities, not only on our district website, but on the YouTube and YouTube show website. The capabilities range from basic range, video, audio, or multimedia. As I said, the school has capability for video as well. Our high school students are lucky to have a television production program. Our TV production program will continue to grow, and these videos will have the input of our students in terms of creating content not only for their internal, not only for their internal TV production show in the mornings, but to give them real-life authentic experiences in television production, video editing, and truly global authentic through the website. So, we connect not only to our community, but our students will also have a voice in components on our website. I did meet with high school students, we've got Ms. Handerhan and Ms. Henry Parks, and we have several students who are also all period at high school level to help build content and create student voice across our district for website content. And this came up. Sorry, this is Ms. Snyder's next, and I'm not sure why the website called. Multimedia components. The navigation standardization, two things I'd like to point out. The I want-to feature, I want to register my child, click link. I want to change my address, click link. These I want-to features are standardized with some different choices, depending on building need across the district, same component, same navigation, however customized to each building needs. Global icons. In addition to the I want-to, there are global icons here that parents can easily click on the global icon to access the information rather than having to navigate through the system. Additionally, a search feature. If you're unable through the I want-to or the global icon, if late, you can enter your name, click your keyword into that box, and you can do an upgrade of all this. At home, they could try. Speaking of that, at home, if you give something a try and it doesn't work, for example, if I were at home and I tried to put that registration, I was going to search for registration in a search bar, and it became frustrating to me because it wasn't working, please fill out this form. Click on the form, give us your role in the community, the site you have an area that you're problem with, your name, an email is optional if you'd like to be contacted, and any feedback that you might have over something that is not working. This is the journey, we're building content, things will need to be edited, links will need to be fixed, we're in the process, and your voice matters, so please share those experiences. That is the perfect example of something you might want to put in that form. I'll put that in my, I'll put it in the form, I sit down so I remember that. Streamlined channels. Many of the channels are identical across schools. For example, K through 5 have the same channel features, 6 through 12 has similar channel features. But once you're on the website, you get the hang of knowing where each item is because there's consistency across the district. When school starts, about a week into school, teachers will be trained on their own websites, and there will be a faculty website channel where you will be able to access your teacher's websites. If the content's not built to pinpoint, if the school hasn't started, the content will come in within the first several weeks of school. The robust calendar system, when we get back to the district, on the bottom of each page, upcoming events are displayed. You have 180 days set, so this will continue to be, and you can use a full calendar using the calendar link. This is Karen Gavin and I are working on this together, are working on color coding and calendar system, so we're here to get access based on the building integrity. Streamlined students and family resources. In the past, many of these resources were scattered throughout the website, now there's streamlined, and you can feel that. And finally, once again, please use that community feedback form on the top. This form is specific to website feedback. If you have an issue with transportation, or you'd like to ask a question to transportation, or you would like to ask a question to our youth services departments, is easily acceptable and are listed here, and contact information within each department. It's easily visible with staff contact. It's a very brief overview of our new website, which I'm actually very proud to share with you, and I do encourage you to keep that community feedback form for your employees, board members, as well as the public. Social media launch. As of now, we do not have Instagram or Facebook at this point, but we'll be launching Instagram and Facebook for the district, and the launch plan is September 2nd, the first day of school for students. And I hope to be doing some live Insta stories and some posts so that you can get a sense of the wonder and excitement that our, through our street day, through 12th grade students feel when they enter our Wall Township Public Schools. There will be a feedback form available for Instagram, Facebook, Twitter as well, in lieu of commenting and DMs through the social media space. So, there will be a specific feedback form for social media for any questions regarding your community, and in lieu of the comments, you will add to the Google reports. That concludes our website overview, and I want to give a special thanks to Karen Gavin and the New York Communications Team, who have been integral to our progress beyond July 1, and how this website could not have happened without her. We are moving forward, we all together, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Okay, at this time, at this time, I would like to invite Jennifer McCann to discuss with us our required safe return plan.
Thanks for coming out tonight and joining us for our forum meeting. Our safe return plan is a requirement that is built into our grant fund. So, if you think back to our dreadful year time during the pandemic or during COVID years, all the districts in the state of New Jersey and probably actually were afforded opportunities for grant funding, one of them being the CARES Act, which expires at the end of this September. We were also given SRT money and then SRT free money. And with that grant fund comes a report or a safe return plan that we are required to submit to the NJPOA every six months in a rotating basis. So, our six months are up. This is separate and apart, if you think back to when we were going through COVID and we had to do a return plan for COVID, that is separate and apart from it, that is not what this is. This is just a regulation in order for us to continue with our funding. There are two components, two main components that are required within the plan. The first one is maintaining health and safety. And in order to do this, there are requirements within these other categories that we need to submit to the state. The first being universal incorrect wearing of masks. Given the circumstances of where we are in terms of the pandemic and the recommendations within the CDC, there would only be extreme circumstances where we would be recommending a case of asking a student or a staff member to wear a mask. And that would possibly be if they were feeling really, really ill, sitting in the nurse's office with really high temperatures, exhibiting extreme symptoms of something, we may recommend or ask them to wear a mask just to protect themselves and for others within the building. In terms of physical distancing, these are all terms that we are aware of. Our signs within our school buildings and things that are on the floor will remain within our buildings, but we are going back to normal. Our desks will be next to each other, we will be doing our small groups, we are utilizing everything that we would normally do within the given school year. Hand washing and respiratory etiquette, of course, that's just upper hygiene and utilizing sanitizer when you possibly can, washing your hands when necessary, and often and squeezing into our elbows, all things that we put into place, but all things that we've been doing regularly. Cleaning and maintaining health facilities, including improving ventilation. Again, our custodial staff is amazing in maintaining the cleanliness within our building, that is not going to change, that will continue, as well as the types of ventilation systems that we have in our buildings and the types of filters that we go and use. Contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine. If there's a particular situation as to why we would need to enact contact tracing or an isolation and quarantine, we would, but given the circumstances, we don't see that that would be something I am ready of. Diagnostic and screening testing. We would just ask as staff members and community members, just monitor your symptoms of your children and of yourselves with your staff member before coming to school. If your students are exhibiting symptoms of being sick, please take them home. And if a staff member is feeling ill, please make sure that we are all taking care of ourselves and each other. Efforts to provide vaccinations to educators, other staff, and students if eligible. At this time, if there's a particular staff member and or community member who's in need of assistance in terms of they were not vaccinated or looking to be vaccinated, that information can be shared through our school nurses and or on our website. An appropriate combination for children with disabilities with respect to the health and safety. If there are certain circumstances in a particular self-contained class or an LLB class, or any other type of situation with a student with disabilities that we need to put into place, we're open to doing that. The other component or main component of the plan is ensuring continuity of services. We are going back to a regular school year. We will be implementing all of our district curriculum and programs, we'll be providing academic support for all of our students, K-12, all of our subgroups through extended school year, after-school year, and during services. Our intervention and referral services, which is our INRS teams, will be processing and identifying students, ensuring that we are providing, implementing, and monitoring best practices in order to assist these students. We'll continue to provide counseling and social emotional learning by securing additional contact time for our nurses and counseling departments, and of course, continue to support our staff and our students throughout the course of the school year. My friend. Well, just short, sweet, just two components, but just a quick update as to what we are submitting to the state.
Thank you so much, Ms. McCann.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will open up for public comment on these two special presentations. Please come up and give your name for the record.
Betsy Cross, Alvin Mall. For the first presentation, when did you say the date is that the old website is coming down? Was it October 23rd? I don't know, Heather, if you want to listen to the questions?
I have to tell more.
That's okay.
If you could please address the chair.
I know, well, she knows the answers.
It's not question and answer time, ask your questions and then we'll get to it.
I'm asking the questions. My question was, when is the old website coming down? I think you said October 23rd, if you can just repeat it again.
And we'll get to that once you're done, please.
My other question is, I did notice on the website that the facilities updates is missing. So, that's everything to do with the trailers that needs to be investigated, everything to do with the mercury, and there was some flooding at Central School. So, that needs to all be brought over, because after losing this lawsuit and hiding these documents and Mr. Smythe.
That's not true, Ms. Cross, no documents were hidden.
Yeah, you just lost the lawsuit. Yes, they were, okay? So, all of that information needs to be brought over, otherwise, the suspicion again is, oh, okay, now they've made a new website and they've gotten rid of all this information. So, we already know that Mr. Scorillo didn't sign his report, put it on business letterhead, and now quietly retired.
Ms. Cross, this has nothing to do with these presentations.
It does. Put the information on the new website.
You're talking about subjects that are years old and done, please move on.
They're not done. How much did the new website cost? And I'm not really even sure if it was needed. I've had some people reach out to me, they said it's too many clicks to get to stuff, it should be much quicker. And, you know, I'm a fan of yours and Karen's, but to me, I just don't know why we needed this new website. People just want to get to see the grades, they want to see the homework portal, we don't need all this fancy stuff. Did these children also, did their parents approve to have their beautiful faces on here? I know my son didn't, well, I didn't agree to have my son in a lawsuit, even though Ms. Hodnett thought it was okay.
That's not true, Ms. Cross.
And Mr. Adenizio, did those parents agree to have their children's faces on this website? I mean, there were some, you know, real close-ups of people. I want to know, did you, did they approve to have their pictures on here? And I understand that this is costing triple to service it, so if it was $8,000 for the old website, it's like $25,000 for this website to service. So, I don't know why it was needed. We need basic stuff. So, I don't know why it was needed. And those are my questions, and I would like them answered on the record tonight, so everybody can hear the answers. I'm live streaming it, and then I'm sure whenever I put in an OPR, then you'll put up your website, because that's when you normally.
Okay, thank you, that has nothing to do with this presentation.
Right. It takes an OPR to get up the YouTube video.
That has nothing to do with this presentation, thank you, Ms. Cross.
I just want it on the record, Mr. Adenizio.
I know, everything's on the record, we record everything, thank you. Dr. Handerhan.
Thank you, Mr. Adenizio. To provide some information, October 4th is the switch-over date for, to where we will fully be moving to the new website and no longer supporting the former website. And I couldn't agree with you more, because it is imperative that those documents for facilities updates do remain on the website. And you will see that there has been a tremendous amount of time investment in moving documents over. And I would like, certainly, I do have Ms. Daniel here, and she could certainly speak with more detail than I certainly could. So, Ms. Daniel, would you like to respond to some of the questions that we received during public comment?
The October 4th end date of the old website is purposeful, because we're under the process of content migration, and due to that fact, we still have our old website accessible. In fact, our links to our old website come to the areas that we're still migrating, or if there's not a link to the wallpublicschool.org/k12.us website, we still access, access the security. I have been looking very closely with district-level stakeholders as well as parents to make sure that there are multiple lenses so that our website is meeting our community needs. Regarding the multiple clips, multiple clips have been reduced in the new structure of the website. I think it will take the community some time to re-acclimate to the new culture of the website in terms of the organization. But again, if people are feeling that there are multiple clips, I would like the feedback forms to be filled out, to tell us specifically where there are challenges in terms of the
in terms of many clips, so that those challenges can be addressed and rectified. There's one other question I wanted to address, and that was regarding student permission. We take that very, very seriously. We have a release form for our students. Those students that were in the video, we have secretaries from the buildings call those parents to get approval for them to be in our video. We are diligent in terms of checking students' names and getting permission. It is very important to us that we have our children's security at heart, and we have done due diligence. And the new Genesis forms, once again, this year, parents can sign off on not allowing their students to be in video, to be photographed, and to not have their names or their pictures. And once again, we are diligent in that effort.
Ms. Daniel, there are many reasons why we moved over to a new website. And moving to the website, it was certainly a tremendous amount of feedback that I received from community members that they wanted, you know, a more updated platform, more access, and also a way to communicate in a more streamlined fashion. But one of the biggest benefits that I see in really moving to the new website is ADA compliance. Would you be able to just provide us with a little bit of context for the ADA compliance that the new website is providing for us over the other?
Absolutely.
One feature that you want to address in the forefront that I did not initially, there is a very special feature here, a translate feature, that our old website did not have. And the translate feature allows all content from this website to be accessible to those with multiple languages. So for example, if we were to have a Ukrainian family coming into our district because they are being relocated, we can click on our website, and our content is accessible in all those languages in Russia. There's an ally tool that is very careful to select, or very careful to select Blackboard because they have a built-in utility called Ally that is working diligently with Blackboard to help us ensure that documents that we're beginning to upload are ADA compliant. The screen readers can read the documents so that those with disabilities have access to the materials on our website. The old platform did not have that in the capacity that we were trying to. So that's another reason for that. A third reason is, can the community feedback that the information on the website was not organized in a coherent and logical way? Those global icons and those I want to publish to do that. I sent out a form to all of the building secretaries and the principals in each building asked for the frequently most asked questions from parents. I collected that information, and we developed the website based on parent voice and community needs. So for example, if, yes. Let's get back to, because I don't believe.
Tell them the black bar is there. Oh, you can just turn it off on the black bar.
Isn't that amazing?
And this is why I thank Karen Nance. Because we are truly a team. There are two brains here, and they work together well together. Also, high contrast, you can hear because bringing us here to the high-contrast school bar, another feature of the Blackboard website in that for those people who have visual disabilities and they need the high-contrast school bar, or reading disabilities, dyslexia, other issues that may need high contrast, this website does that. This website also integrates into our mass notification system. So we're streamlined. Previously, we were using the Blackboard mass notification system. Now, we have integrated our website into the mass notification system to push out information in a more streamlined way. Regarding the clips, and here's again where I would like to have to be feedback, if there's too many clips to get to an area, that's where perhaps a community member can fill out a Google form and say, "I'm taking too many time to apply to some of our assignments." And then I will email that person back saying, "Thank you for your feedback. I'm making an available icon for you." So I hope that addresses several of those problems.
Thank you so much, Ms. Daniel.
I love the pause. I love the pause.
I am a supervisor of instructional technology situations. My position is to bring my skill set to the community and make the accessibility of the website accessible. If you have questions, we're very excited to address that.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. And I want to clarify something that was said, you know, and it's been at June meeting, July meeting, and August meeting. For purposes of clarification, Mrs. Cross's Oprah complaint necessitated a virtual hearing. While the virtual hearing was open to the public, Ms. Cross took the unprecedented step of posting the virtual link to her Facebook page without appropriately notifying the court in order to allow the court to make the necessary arrangements. At that time, Ms. Cross's Facebook profile picture was that of her son. Her son's picture appeared on each and every one of Ms. Cross's Facebook posts until it recently changed it. When the Facebook post was brought to the attention of the court, it was necessary, it necessitated, I'm sorry, it had the picture of her son attached to the profile. When Ms. Cross requested that the post be removed from the court filing, the court asked both parties to consent to this process, which we did. So we did not do anything with a picture. Good evening, Mr. Rann.
Oh, Ralph, I really wish you hadn't just said all that before I stood up. I had something really simple to say. I was just going to be that jerky girl who pointed out some poor drafting in the slides. As to the safe return plan, I think on the first slide, the word should, you should drop the indefinite article of "the" and put in "their" health and safety when talking about special needs children. Or you have to drop the "the" altogether. And on your second slide, when you said that there's, we are concerned about the mental health of our staff, I think you should be inclusive of students. You said that verbally, but if you're going to use the presentation again, I would make sure that the school evinces in writing as well that there's concern for the mental health of staff and students, just to be more inclusive. That's just to be a little more nitpicky if you're going to use that again and have it be effective. As to the first presentation on the website, I had the same question that Betsy did as to what the price was. I'm just out of curiosity to know what we spent on it. I'm also really curious about the, if there is any editing in the migration of data, and if there is, who's in charge of it? What's the criteria? Or is it something that's simply being done wholesale? And if it's being done wholesale, meaning en masse, altogether, meaning everything in the past is being forwarded into the future, what will be the format? So that, will it be chronological? Will it be searchable? Will it be by topics? So that, will we lose the old searchability terms and the way we used to find, for example, a memo on the trailers? Will we still be using the same mechanism to locate that material post-migration? I was curious if other schools are doing, are abandoning that K-12 designation use of that website and the price involved? Like, is this something we were out there leading the pack on, or are other schools abandoning it for ADA, increased ADA compliance or any other issues? I was wondering if we were in line with the other schools. And I also wanted to know, that I found that the statement that the concern for the students' pictures is a high concern and overriding to be not intentionally facetious by Ms. Daniels, by any stretch of imagination, but kind of made a mockery of Ralph when you said it. Because you said two things to this group here and to the people online that are just not true. Betsy Cross did nothing wrong in the, posting the link to the court hearing. She, as well as I, had spoken to the court clerk and were given the link with no restrictions placed on it. So there was no reason to think that anyone who called in or wanted to participate couldn't use that link. What they were unprepared for was the number of people that wanted to watch, and their link that they gave was not capable of handling that. And they had to create a separate link that could host a larger group. But Betsy did nothing wrong. And you, to cast aspersions that she did something wrong in the context of that hearing is just absolutely false. And the picture that was posted by Wall, and I've confronted the board with this before, because really, just quite simply, owe her an apology. And I've been on all the court hearings. I've heard the judge mocking Wall, mocking your attorneys, mocking you.
Is this related to the presentations?
Yes, because it was about the Genesis posting of the releases.
It was about the website and also the return.
It's on the Genesis website. I wanted to know if Betsy Cross's release
It's really a stretch, Mr. President.
I don't care if you think it's a stretch.
I don't believe this person was a student in the district.
Ralph just spoke to it. I'm making a comment. I know, I'm just saying, it just wasn't true. That was not her son's picture on the Facebook. That wasn't it. So you're just not telling the truth for a second time.
No, that's not true, Ms. Rann.
No, you're wrong. It was not her profile picture.
Ms. Cross gets up month after month and says, "Why did we use her son's picture? That was her Facebook profile, and now you're saying it wasn't?"
It wasn't.
Okay.
It never was.
Please stop yelling out.
Never was. It never was. That's the problem.
That's okay. Well, it was submitted to the court, and the court asked us if we would remove it. Thank you. Thank you. That's not true, Ms. Cross. Thank you.
I've heard the court mocking the board, and I don't think you guys are sitting and listening to the hearings. You really should, because you're being mocked for something really just careless, and you really owe an apology.
That has nothing to do with the presentation.
It does, when I want to know. If the lip service that she just paid to parents having their children's rights respected is true, we have a violation, and an apology is owed. I'm just saying it's facetious. Your comment is.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment?
And I still have two minutes.
I have two minutes on the time.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Mr. Adenizio, I would like to address, I would like to address one of the inquiries regarding the migration of reports and data and the integrity of the documents that are going to be moved over to the, to the new website. The documents are coming over as whole. As they appear on the, our old website, they will appear in the new website. They will not, any kind of report will appear as it was. They will be organized in a very, much more user-friendly ability to search and the way the documents are organized. Additionally, these documents are going through the process of going through a program to enable these reports to be ADA compliant. So not only are the reports coming over intact, the reports are coming over in a very user-friendly, organized fashion of which we are tending to the special needs of anyone in the public that requires such need.
Thank you, Dr. Henderhand.
Ralph, can I make one comment about the website, too? One of the other things about the website, our briefing on the website, is that it's going to translate to your phone a whole lot better. I mean, I know a lot of people, you know, still use their computers and everything like that, but there's a whole lot of people that go and look on this. I don't know how old the w.12.nj.us is, but I don't think there were all that many school districts that were still using that. I think we were sort of at the tail end of that URL or whatever it is, or tag. But that's one of the things I think is important about the redesign on this website and the need for a new website, because you have a whole lot more people, you know, accessing on their phones. And there's an app, too, right? Please, yeah.
Yeah, so if that keeps working that up, the next thing in development is the creation of an app for our website that is in the process of reporting through Google and Apple, so that the app will be available in the App Store. You have to develop the app. And once you develop, you can't sell the app before the website is live. And that is the website that's online, and it's in the process of developing the app.
Thank you. Mr. Sanfilippo, did you have anything else?
I just wanted to highlight that for the public and for the parents and for the students for, you know, their knowledge and understanding. I think they'll all enjoy it.
Thank you.
Mr. Adenizio?
Yes.
I just want to very quickly just thank Ms. Daniel and her team. The website looks awesome. I did look at it from my phone, and it looked like a huge upgrade, but tonight was the first night I looked at it on a computer, and it's just, it's a really, really, it's well done, and thank you.
So, President's Report, I wanted to start by thanking you, Ms. Daniel, for the hundreds of hours you've spent developing this beautiful website on top of everything else you do. I know the long hours you have put in, and I also want to thank Mrs. McGowan for all she's done since she's come on board in her new role, helping you. It really, well, long overdue, and thank you so much for that. And I'd also like to wish all our students and staff a happy and healthy new school year. You know, the possibilities are endless, and it's because of our incredible staff that we have, the dedication and commitment every single day, day in and day out. When things get tough, they keep forging ahead and making Wall Township one of the best school districts anywhere in the country. So thank you to all them. With that, Dr. Henderhand. Good evening, again.
Thank you, Mr. Adenizio. It is hard to believe that the 2022-2023 school year is right around the corner. I like to refer to it as "go time" for school employees this time of year. I wish to thank all of the Wall Public Schools summer staff for all of their hard, hard work getting the school ready for the first day. I am also happy to report that the summer theater camps were a raging success this summer. They wrapped up recently. And a special thank you to Ms. Ellen Hollander, Ms. Erin Radvansky, Mr. Mike Ryan, and Ms. Alexis Maladakis. They put their heart and soul into this camp, these camps, and I wholeheartedly thank them. I also want to remind Wall High School students about tomorrow night's fall season kickoff. This joint venture with the Wall High School PTO and the athletic, the new athletic director, Ms. Marnie Henry, promises to be a great night for all attendees. Just a reminder that freshman orientation will be held tomorrow morning. Also tomorrow morning, the district welcomes new employees as we begin the new faculty orientation. I would also like to officially welcome all incoming kindergartners, also known as the Class of 2035. I can't. So their journey begins this week with kindergarten orientation. Attention all Wall Township veterans. I am happy to announce that Wall Township veterans will be given by request a free admission for Wall High School athletic and artistic events. To get your special admissions card, I invite veterans to contact Ms. Kim Keeter in the superintendent's office. Please call or email to arrange a pickup. On behalf of the Wall Township Public Schools Board of Education, I would like to thank you for your service. Thank you, veterans. On September 1st, we welcome back our 10-month faculty and staff. And of course, September 2nd, we welcome back all of the students. Please be reminded that there is an early dismissal on Friday, September 2nd. At our September business meeting, we will welcome this year's student representatives. I can't wait to introduce you to them. And there are a few other updates for the board and for the public. And it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Tiffany Steiner, Director of Intervention Services and Student Wellness. Ms. Steiner, thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you. I'm going to present over here. Thank you for having me. If this is okay, I hope it's okay for me to present from here.
Terrific. Thank you, Ms. Steiner.
Thank you. This evening, I just wanted to give some updates about HIB. I know HIB I know HIB is always a hot topic. It is a law that has been 10 years old and with every year, there's updates made to this law based on case law. So at this point, I want to review what is a HIB. Statutory HIB, it has to meet four requirements for a situation to be processed as a case of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And this is all based on state law. So the requirements for a HIB is actions, distinguishing characteristics, connections, and disruption, and harm. To elaborate on that, we'll kind of break it down and just look at what an action is. It can be a gesture, written act, verbal act, physical act. A distinguishing characteristic within that act means that it has to be based on a reasonably perceived or motivated by an actual or perceived characteristic. For example, you could see race, color, religion, ancestry. The third component for a HIB to be processed as a positive HIB would be, click, a connection and a disruption. So it would happen on or off school property, but it needs to have a nexus to the school. So if it does happen off school property, it needs to feed back into the school to show that it substantially disrupts, interferes, or gets in the way of the rights of others. And finally, it has to create harm. So reasonable person should know the actual causes. It has an effect of insulting or demeaning or creates a hostile environment. So what does all of that mean? In moving ahead, the new changes within the state law are listed up on the screen and they found that they're going to take some of what has happened in the past and move ahead in the, in the future with helping students become more responsible for their actions, accountable, but also reflective. So for example, offenders who have a third HIB, this will require the staff and school administration to put together a student intervention plan, which won't just include supportive measures and consequences, but also could include things like a student accompanied by a parent or guardian to complete a class related to reducing HIB behavior. So the goal is for our community to be sensitive and hyper-aware of what is HIB and how can we resolve conflicts with students before it becomes situations that come to render HIB. Also, with cyber harassment, the new law says that this is now being processed as a fourth-degree crime and it includes court fees. Liability can be, a family could move ahead with a civil action and a family could be liable. Also, other changes at the state level is that the New Jersey Department of Education has added a position for a school climate state coordinator, which the state coordinator would offer supports and services to school districts. Other changes include parent reporting on a form and on the district website. So anonymous reporting, there will be a link on our new website that has the ability for parents to anonymously report any situation that they believe their child's involved in that could be a HIB. And finally, some of the documentation and procedures for communication have also been updated in the new law. So at the state level, we see changes, but we're also changing our approach at the school level. So our kickoff for this year, over the summer, we did have some legal training that was given to our administration during our summer retreat in July. We've updated our HIB forms and we have on our new website, website tons of resources, including what's required by law, but also there's multiple links for parents to find information about HIB. We've also created a HIB hub, which is a Google Classroom. This has all of our resources housed in one center. So when our school anti-bullying specialists return in September 2nd, we'll go through these documents. We're streamlining the process. We're streamlining documentation to make sure that there's consistency and equity across all schools. We've enrolled our school anti-bullying specialists in training in September through Strauss S. May. We're expanding training for our WIS and Wall High School to include backup anti-bullying specialists. So for the sake of efficiency, we'll have other people within a school building also trained to do the HIB process. We're having parent HIB information sessions where I will be going to PTO meetings in September and October and making sure that parents understand what is HIB and how that translates to their children. In the beginning of the year, there will be class meetings to review behavioral expectations and student supports. So on the elementary levels, these class meetings will look like the teacher conducting a class meeting with her students. Where at the bigger levels, like the middle school and secondary level, we'll see more of our assistant principals presenting. Finally, our student programs and assemblies, we are going to be incorporating opportunities to teach core competencies like self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. These are all within the framework of the state and deemed to be the best practices. And finally, we have teaming at WIS and a ninth-grade counselor at the Wall High School. And how does this help students? This, this approach grounds students. So for the teams, they'll be grounded in a group of teachers who can really help students thrive socially. And on the ninth grade level, being grounded in one counselor helps students make connections between each other and a counselor to really be able to target transitional services for our ninth-grade students. Finally, we do have our school climate teams and they will be planning based on community building type of activities. For example, like tomorrow night will be a community building activity. So I'm excited for this school year. We're hoping that, we know that there was many HIBs last year and we're hoping that this comprehensive approach will help between the parents, students, administrators, and teachers that will be able to reach all of the students and make sure that we have a more socially comfortable situation in our schools. Thank you.
Ms. Steiner, thank you so much for all of your hard work and leadership. I know you certainly have been busy with this endeavor since you took over your new position July 1st. So thank you very much. At this time, I would like to reintroduce our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Jennifer McCann. Ms. McCann will be providing us with an update of our summer programs and also an update of our health curriculum as we're moving forward. Ms. McCann?
Can we ask questions on that one? The presentation?
Please stop yelling out.
When are we going to ask questions on that one? We're supposed to have five minutes of questions round. Why don't we follow your rules?
Please stop yelling out.
I'm not yelling out.
Since last summer, Wall Township was very fortunate in order to be able to incorporate a number of different summer programs. Those summer programs were funded primarily through Deborah and the Better Midship Early. Whatever programs went summer night had to be handled well by the district. This was a district-wide program. We brought in students who were wanting to participate from all four elementary schools to Old Mill. We also incorporated incoming students as well. The program centered around ELA, math, art, music, as well as providing students with these opportunities and different projects that they created over the four different periods that they attended. At the secondary level, our program was really based on standards in the mathematics sessions of the program. We really wanted to hone in on making sure that we were providing our students with the appropriate education that they needed for the next grade level and ensuring that they have the success in the upcoming school year. In terms of the ELA component of the summer program, we really worked with all the students in completing their summer reading projects and got a lot of positive feedback and that students were actually more focused as a result of it, which is fantastic. We also had our summer explorers program, which is for at West Del Mar, which is for our ELL population. And this year, we sort of focused on American culture through a lens of food. The students participated in the cooking process for traditional American food such as pancakes, jell-o, pizza. They participated in a portrait delivery. They helped to sort of deal with the aquatic and hydroponic farming methods in this building. And then of course, we always have to incorporate reading, writing, and math performance as well, but for those students, they learn through those experiences, which makes it real real and authentic. We also had our extended year program for our special ed students. This is particularly for, we got 15 of our pre-grad students that came over the summer and they focused on some of their academic skills, which was calendar, accounting, sorting objects by attribute, as well as learning some social skills and current in learned thinking and listening skills, and again, working on their fine English skills. At the elementary level, we had two different programs. We have a four-week elementary program where they particularly worked on creating lessons around the theme of plants and animal habitats and creating more of a project-based learning opportunity for our students. And we incorporated math literacy as one of our standards as well as creating writing skills. Our six-week self-contained program, which were our LLD, NC, and ERI students and they continue to work on their personal goals within their IDPs. And they had numerous field trips to provide them with those learning authentic programs. They give them no limits kept by young children, higher adventures, living in a barn and growing dreams. At the secondary level, we had our four-week and six-week program as well. Similar to the elementary program, they really worked on their math and ELA skills that aligned with their IDPs. And again, for the six-week program, for the students who needed that more authentic learning, they too took their community-based strategies. We also had the summer a little bit reading program for our middle school students. This is an intervention program that really works with students who are, have a real challenge in reading and they learn different strategies, which is basically breaking down and blending the sounds by tapping out each sound with their fingers as they learn to bring the words together, the sounds of the words together. And last but not least, we had our wall theater program this summer as well. And they did two different productions on August 18th. The younger students, in grades four through six, did a production of Annie Kids. And the older students, the seventh or ninth grade students, did getting to know books and the feedback. And I know Dr. Handerhan spoke to it herself, of watching the middle school students interacting with those high school students and really working together and creating that bond, went along with it. It was really cool to watch the students' phenomenal productions. So thank you to all of the teachers and parents and students who participated over the summer and who look forward to continuing the next couple years.
Ralph?
Yes, Mr. All.
Yeah, well, will those slides, presentations be on the website for the community to look at? I know some people in the audience were kind of jotting some notes down, but just, you know, to have that whole file up there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCann. Ms. McCann, did you want to give a quick update of the health curriculum, where we are in the continuum?
So as you are all probably aware, back in June of 2020, the state of New Jersey adopted new PE and health standards. All of the districts in the state of New Jersey are required to implement those standards by September of 2022. With that being said, back in January or February, the state, as it does for numerous content areas, shared out different resources for districts to utilize in the process of writing curriculum. The state doesn't always provide districts with curriculum, although they do have samples on their website, but we are not in any school district required to adopt any of those curriculums. We are required, however, to utilize the standards and create our own curriculum in our district that meets our school community needs. With that being said, we had multiple curriculum committees working over the summer at the various grade levels, 9 through 12, in writing our health curriculum. Ms. Steiner and myself, Dr. McCann, are in the midst of reviewing that curriculum. What we will be doing moving forward is in September, prior to any health, major health instruction happening, we will be holding parent meetings in each of the buildings in order for you to review the curriculum, have some insight as to what those lessons are going to look like. And at the elementary level, health starts at the second arching period. In the middle school, we will be able to work it within the master schedule that within having those meetings, again, none of that content will be taught until you have the opportunity to see it. At the high school level, health will be starting with driver's ed with our tenth grade students in order, again, to give us the opportunity and do the opportunity to see the curriculum before we implement it. If at any point after reviewing that curriculum that you feel as though there are lessons within the unit that you do not feel your child, you want your child to participate in, you will have the opportunity to opt your child out of that particular lesson. We go at those parent meetings before providing you with more information with that in terms of what that form looks like, where you can find that form, and various other components of it. But right now, we just wanted to let you know where we are at with the process, knowing that it is somewhat of a hot topic out there. So think through that.
Thank you so much, Ms. McCann. Thank you so much for your leadership in navigating a whole lot since you've been here, since you started July 1st as well too. So I thank you for all of your hard work. And again, I would like to thank Ms. McCann and Ms. Steiner for helping really bring life to my superintendent's report, which I am wrapping up right now. So Mr. Adenizio, back to you. I have concluded my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Handerhan.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Dr. Handerhan, can you give us an update on what's happening with our kindergarten classes at Allenwood School, Tony and?
Oh, certainly. I'm happy to report that we have, the district, as we've discussed over the last two meetings, we have spent a lot of time working on the capacity of the classrooms, but we also worked very hard identifying students that lived on the border for the geographical, where the line is for Old Mill and the line is for Allenwood. And I'm happy to say that our work was not fruitless and as such, we were able to accommodate all of the students that we did have to reassign from Allenwood. So all of the Allenwood kindergarten students that were reassigned were offered a spot back at Allenwood Elementary. So I want to thank, thank you.
Ms. Adenizio?
I just have a related follow-up question. So if all of the students were admitted and we didn't start any new classes, correct?
Correct.
What are the class size?
The classes are certainly, our preferred minimum is 22. There were 24 and 23 and, but I would like to add that all of our kindergarten classes at Allenwood have a paraprofessional, of which will be, and an additional one is on the agenda.
I'm sure the teachers will appreciate that and the kids. Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Handerhan. Any board members, any Board of Education updates?
Just, just, yes, mister?
Please stop yelling out. Please stop yelling out.
We need to talk about the presentation. That's the law.
No, first of all, that is not correct. Second of all, it was part of Dr. Handerhan's superintendent update, part of her report. That wasn't a special presentation, so thank you. Mr. San Filippo?
I'm going to reiterate a couple of things that I've said the last few meetings in response to the idea of our schools, you know, being packed with many, many kids and the changing demographics of the town, coming out of COVID and houses being sold here and new families moving in, which is fantastic for this community. It's a, it's a good spot to highlight the fact that we really need a referendum because we need to build, you know, some more space in our schools. Very, very important and I just would like to highlight that again.
Thank you, Mr. San Filippo.
Ms. Adenizio?
When I was reviewing the curriculum instruction minutes, I noticed that I didn't put the end time, which I had in my notes but didn't translate. So for the minutes, the end time of that meeting was 7:14 PM.
Okay. We will update that, which leads us into committee reports, which have been posted and it will be updated. Any other comments on committee reports? Seeing none, we will move on. All right, at this time, we will open up for public comment on agenda. All right, at this time, we will open up for public comment on agenda action items only. So, those are the items we will be voting on this evening. Please come up and give your name for the record.
Betsy Cross, I live in Wall. Just had a question. We didn't get an update on the high school principal.
That is not an action item.
I know, but we deserve, we deserve an update on the high school principal. It's August 23rd.
This is action items that we are voting on, Ms. Cross.
Right, that's why you shouldn't be the president, Mr. Adenizio. Okay.
Well, we just have simple rules here.
I did notice that you didn't have your end time on there, and I don't think you even wrote that you wrote those minutes. So, next time, put your name on it.
Mrs. Cross, I typed the minutes as we're in the meeting. I wrote those minutes, I bring them home, and I review them, which is why I was able to find my notes.
I know, you should put your name that you wrote them.
I'm the chairperson, the chairperson writes the notes.
Nobody knows that you're the chairperson.
It says it in the minutes.
Anybody can see it online. I wrote, "Who wrote this?", question mark, and I circled PM because you didn't put the time. Anybody can look at it. I'll hold it up to the screen. There's nothing here that has your name that you wrote it.
I think it was great that you asked that question. Now, it's on record that I am the chairperson, and the chairperson writes the minutes.
Put your name on it.
Thank you for asking that question.
Ten years from now, nobody's going to know who wrote this. They didn't even know the end time.
The chairperson drafts the minutes.
Right, nobody knows who you are. Okay, I'm looking at personal committee minutes. Five sentences for a meeting for an hour and a half, and I wrote on this, "Who wrote this?" I have no idea. Does anybody know who wrote this one?
Mr. President, the chairperson writes the minutes.
I know, who, I have no idea who the chairperson is. You put your name on it. Joe Hall wrote his name. Thank you, Joe. I didn't have to go to the website, 100 clicks, to find out who the chairperson was.
For the record, it's not 100 clicks.
And thank you, Adam Nasser. He put his name on it. He put the date, and he put he wrote it. So, anybody that writes minutes, put your name on it. Because when we go back, the next time the prosecutor's office comes in and you have to find out who wrote the minutes, we don't know who it is.
That's nothing on the agenda, and you're speculating again.
Resolution, don't worry, they'll be in again, Ralph, because you're here. Okay, resolution, building exterior upgrades is on here for Spartan Construction, APIC Construction. I'm just not sure what they're doing. We got prices, but we don't, it doesn't say what they're doing. Upgrades, rebid at special, oh, I'm sorry, I am sorry, special services building, $192,000. Wow, that seems like a lot of money. I see we're, we have a bus that we're selling for $2,000. I would think we could get more than that. Under the health and safety presentation, and I think, I don't know, Jennifer McCann, I'm getting all confused with who gave what.
This is for agenda action items, things we're voting on.
Well, you have this on here, maintaining health and safety. It says, "After returning from isolation, students and staff who return to school during six to 10 days of isolation." Are you still requiring six to 10 days of isolation? Because that's what's here. That's the question I have, and I'm sure other parents do that have children here. It's in your, here, okay? So, go back and look at that, maintaining health and safety, number 1A. Number two, I can hold it up to the screen so people can see it, okay? Why is there no attorney here tonight? Have they been fired?
That is not an action item.
Yeah, it is, because the attorney is looking to get paid on here, and the attorney shouldn't be paid for anything. The attorney should be fired, Brian Smythe should be written up, you lost the lawsuit, you were supposedly.
All right, Ms. Cross, that's nothing on the agenda. So, if you're not going to follow the rules, your time is up.
You're paying your attorney, it is. You're paying your attorney like $10,000, and you shouldn't be paying them anything because we need to be getting back whatever you're paying my attorney from that attorney. So, they shouldn't be paid a penny. And I had this conversation, it is an action item.
That's not an action item.
Do not vote to pay Scorillo, McKeever, and Athena Cornell. Do not vote to pay them the $10,000 that is on this bill list. That is my point. And Adam Nasser, we had this conversation at the last meeting. No Wall taxpayer should be paying any of these bills from Mr. Scorillo. They should be paying all the attorney bills because, like I told you all, I was going to sue and I was going to win. And Ralph, you're a complete liar. My son's picture was not on, was not my profile picture with that link.
All right, Ms. Cross, we've gone through this a million times.
So, you're a liar, and you need to prove it, and I told Adam Nasser, you're taking information from the lawyer that just lost the case.
Ms. Cross, if you're not going to follow the rules, your time is up.
I'm going through the agenda items, stop cutting me off.
Start telling the truth.
I always tell the truth. You are the liar, Ralph. Can we go over, I see pages and pages of stipends, and I hope there are minutes for these. You know, I see the fishing club is a Mr. Hodnitz, and he gets paid $1,263. Who goes over and goes over these minutes, how many times these people meet, as we're paying out thousands and thousands of dollars of stipends? Now, that's what I want to know. Now, there are people that absolutely deserve this money. In the music department, in the theater department, they deserve the money. A lot of these other clubs, I have no idea what they do, but I hope you have written minutes, and I hope you document when they meet, because it's a lot of money that you're paying out. I have an extra two minutes from that other presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Cross, your time is up. No, that's not the way it works. Your time is up, thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment on action items?
Are the bills action items, Rick? I'll get up.
Yes.
I just had one action item comment, and that was to echo Betsy's comment on the paying of the bills for the Scorilla Law Firm. I've spoke to the board several times now to say, as a person with considerable experience in doing investigations, I'm now hitting year 29, the investigation that was turned over on the trailers completely and utterly failed to address the topic. It did not include.
Mr. Ann, that's not an action item this evening.
But that's the bills. He's billing you for, and then he's billing.
We're not paying bills for trailers tonight.
But you're paying his bills for the Oprah on the trailers. That's the lawsuit bill, that's tonight's. It's, right, it's $10,000, and he lost the lawsuit. He has to provide the documents. Brian Smythe was wrong, the attorney was wrong, and if you pay him in the meantime, I guarantee you're never going to see the money back that he actually owes. Now, the courts ordered him to pay those attorney fees. I don't know how many people know it, but the courts ordered him to pay Betsy's attorney's fees because Betsy was correct, and the attorney was wrong. Yes, he has.
Yes, he has.
Yes, he has.
Ms. Cross, please stop yelling out. Ms. Cross, this is your last warning. Please stop calling out.
So, the attorney's fees are ordered to be paid. I don't want to see the board paying Scorilla's law firm and then be unable to recapture those funds back. Better to hold off on a payment or be delayed until it's clarified, we obviously have a dispute about it. Wait till it's clarified before you pay it, because you'll have a hard time shaking it loose after. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for comment on action items? Yes.
Don Herbert, the nurses' report that's on the agenda, the Nurses Plan, it's dated 2023, 2020, 2022, last 23. Isn't that actually last year's report?
No, we're going into the 22, 23 school year.
Yeah, but.
So, it has been updated, sir.
Yes.
But there's numbers on there from last year, so actually, it's the 21, 22 Nurses Report, not the 22, 23 Nurses Report.
You're correct. It does include the numbers from last year because it's a report encompassing that it has the data from the previous year, yes.
So, it should be dated, is it still right for the 22, 23 school year?
Yes, because we report out on the previous years, yes. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Seeing none, we will close public comment.
Mr. Adenizio, I'd just like to, I would just like to provide some clarification with respect to the Safe Return Plan. Students, when they are positive with COVID-19, they, they need to stay home for five days, and on the sixth day, the nurse recommends to the family that the students wear the masks upon return to school on the sixth day. So, I just, provided they are asymptomatic. So, I just wanted to provide some clarification about regarding the Safe Return Plan that was mentioned.
Thank you. All right, I ask for a motion for approval for the executive session minutes of July 19th, 2022, and the business meeting minutes of July 19th, 2022.
I'll make that one.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any questions, discussions? Mr. Smythe, roll call, please.
Mr. Buffa?
Abstain.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnitz?
Abstain.
Mr. Malab?
Yes.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sanfilippo?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizio?
Yes. I'll ask for approval, the first policy readings for policy 2415.04, 2415.50, 2415.51, 2415.52, 2415.53, 2415.54, 2415.55, 2415.56, 2461, Regulation 2461.06, Regulation 2461.09, Regulation 2461.10, Regulation 2461.12, Regulation 2461.14, Regulation 2461.15, Regulation 2461.19, Policy 5350, and Regulation 5350. Good, we have a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Malab. I will open up for public hearing on those policies. Seeing none, closed public comment. Mr. Smythe, roll call.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnitz?
Yes.
Mr. Malab?
Yes.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sanfilippo?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizio?
Yes. I'll ask for a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 5512, Policy 7410, Regulation 7410.01, Policy 8420, Policy 9320, and Regulation 9320. Could we have a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Open up for public hearing on any of these policies, regulations. Seeing none, closed public comment. Mr. Smythe, roll call, please.
Ms. Hodnitz?
Yes.
Mr. Malab?
Yes.
Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sanfilippo?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Adenizio?
Yes. This time, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, number 13, 14, and 15 on our agenda. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, could I have a second? Second. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Smythe, roll call, please.
Mr. Malab?
Yes, with the exception on a superintendent's report, human resources report abstain on numbers 19 and 21.
Noted. Mr. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Sanfilippo?
Yes.
Ms. Stites?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Mr. Buffa?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Hodnitz?
Yes, with the exception of number 14A, numbers 19S, and 21.
Noted. Mr. Adenizio?
Yes, but I will abstain from number 21, the portion pertaining to my family member. At this time, we will open up for public comment on any school-related issue. Please come up and give your name for the record.
Mary Connors, Wall Township. I had just scribbled a bunch of notes, so if you don't mind, I'll just bullet point them instead of going into depth. As part of an email that came out the other day regarding Meal Pay Plus no longer being used, switching to a new online payment process for lunches, do I have to request a refund because my kids all have balances, or will it automatically transfer? As far as the summer reading, I just want to ask, years ago, my kids are much older now, there was a summer reading program where the kids could just sign up and go to the library, I think, on Thursday mornings at Old Mill, and they could pick a book, and there was an activity. So, if you didn't want to sign up for a big summer program, the kids could just go and really learn to love reading because it had like this interactive component to every book in the library that was pre-pold. And I was trying to direct some children, families that have younger children, to do that this summer, and I couldn't find it. So, I don't know if it went away, or could we bring it back? Because it really made my children love books. It was amazing. I don't know, I think some of you have kids my kid's age, and if you ever did that, it was really awesome. So, you weren't committing to a whole summer, it was just Thursday mornings at the library. And I would like to see that come back for young students. For, the CDC no longer is requiring people to quarantine. Are we going to follow the CDC, or are we going to follow our own? So, just to mention, I'm so thrilled Ms. Steiner is now working on HIBs. I have a great moment of relief knowing that she'll be spearheading this. My question is, I worry about the kids that have two-founded HIBs and not the third. How do we counsel the child with two-founded HIBs and maybe a handful or more of unfounded? What kind of, what kind of focus do we put on that child to thwart off the third and cut it off at the pass? Like, do we have counseling in place for that two, two HIBs and maybe four unfounded HIBs? Because that's who we want to target also, and work with them to just cut it off at the pass. Will their parents of these children that are repeat HIB or founded, unfounded, be asked to be involved in some of those student programs so they could see the effects, whether or not they're founded or unfounded? How the victims or the so-called victims are harmed, even if it's unfounded? Will the parents be included in that? Because I think it would be eye-opening. I would want to be included if my child hurt somebody unfounded and be part of helping counsel my own children the way that school is, so we're a cohesive team. I think that might be helpful. I'm interested to see how the teams work this year. My son in sixth grade is the first one to go through this, and I would like a chance to have a two-way conversation with the team members to see how they, how they feel it's working, and I don't know if we're able to do that. The website, I did a lot of clicking, but I think that's user, not so much program. I do find the search button better. From my phone, I can't search anything from my phone now on the new one. I can search, so that's helpful. As far as the general music position being open at the middle school, which has now caused string and choir to not have pull-out lessons, I think that's a disservice. We've seen over the years since Mr. Houston retired, the numbers of string and choir students going down from the grammar school to middle school and definitely in the high school. We had an uptick during Martino in the middle school, and then it dropped down again when Martino left. So, now to lose that pull-out session, the one-on-one where you're really getting your instruction, I think it's going to harm our orchestra and choir. And it's not the time to harm that when students that don't have sports need to hang on to whatever they can, since they've lost so much interactive extracurricular, and music's not one we should lose. Because at the high school, we have to admit, the band gets the lion's share of the attention. So, anything we could do to bring string and choir up would be helpful. Let's see, what else did I have? I think that's all I had. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Fred Springel, 1408 Marietta Road in Wall. I'm a 57-year resident of the township, a 1983 graduate of this school, and a retired teacher and high school football coach. My wife, Michelle, also is a retired teacher, and we're the proud parents of two Wall High School graduates. My son, 2010 Fred, and our daughter, Morgan, 2012, and they are both Wall Township residents and homeowners. I say that because I'm very proud to live in this town, and so are they. I'm here tonight to thank the Board of Ed, the high school administration, our new athletic director, Ms. Henry Parks, Kelly Rotzma, if I misspelled that or mispronounced that, forgive me, who's the Wall High School PTO president, Lisa Adam, and the Wall Football Parents Group for their support in helping us launch the Wall High School Football Alumni Group. This is something that we feel is long overdue. It is the goal of this Wall Group. This is something that we feel is long overdue. It is the goal of this Wall Football Alumni Group to unite all regardless of their team record, coach, championships won, whatever it was, to build pride, spirit, and tradition for all the present, past, and future Crimson Knights. On Friday, October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, we are asking that all Wall High School Football Alumni of all time dating back to nineteen fifty-nine to make every effort to attend the home game and be recognized on the field prior to the opening kickoff for their commitment as Crimson Knights on and off the gridiron to show our support to the current team and coaches. It is our desire to continue to build this group and have one game each season designated to recognize football alumni prior to the kickoff of that game. This is, I'm going to read to you an email that I sent out to all alumni that we've been able to gather email addresses. We are in the process, a little bit, a little bit repetitive of what I just said, but I wanted you to hear this because you're not going to get it. We are in the process of organizing a all-time Wall High School Football Alumni Club. This is long overdue, and it's our intention to bring all of us together regardless of our record, championship, coach, helmet color, and provide support to current players and develop a brotherhood of all who played for the Crimson Knights. If your name is on this list, thank you for your submission. We share this, please share this with any other football alumni that you may know. Please have anyone share their email address to me, and I provided my phone number and my email address. The Wall High School Football Parents Group, high school administration, athletic department have designated this year's football alumni for Friday, October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, seven p.m. kickoff versus Menalupan High School. We'd like as many alumni as possible to please attend this game and be recognized. Please arrive by six-thirty p.m., convene in the end zone closest to the refreshment stand. We will have more details available as we get them. Family and friends are encouraged to attend the game as well. However, on-field festivities will be for football alumni only. Moving forward, it is our intention to have one home game a season designated as Wall Football Alumni, day or night. We envision hosting a fundraiser of some sorts that we as alumni can give back to the program. Maybe it be program needs, a sponsor, an award at the banquet, a scholarship, perhaps a college and career planning or networking group that can work alongside of all student athletes moving forward. We hope to crawl before we walk and help the school, town, and football program to be the very best around. And this year, as there's a couple milestones, it's the fortieth anniversary of the nineteen eighty-two state championship team, which was the first in school history, and the twentieth anniversary of the two thousand two state championship team. And then we're just asking anyone to please reply and spread the word. As of now, I've gathered about two hundred and fifty email addresses, and we're hoping that it grows. I did want to mention that I did have one gentleman from nineteen fifty-nine reach out to me. He unfortunately lives in Missouri and said he highly doubted he'd make the trip, but he was honored to be kept in the loop and is looking forward to it. In light of what happened in the past year, I think it'd be a great, it's a great thing to do for the current kids and have a sense of ownership. And our hope is that at the banquet every year, that they are asked to become alumni and feel like they're always wanted back, regardless of what, you know, their team record was and what have you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Barthel, and I live in Wall.
You can move the mic down. It moves.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So I have no children in the school system, but I am a taxpayer and a concerned citizen. So as far as Jennifer McCann was discussing with the health curriculum, that parents are going to have the opportunity to review it beforehand to opt their kids out, would I, as a town resident, also be able to review the curriculum?
Yes.
Yes, I would?
Yes.
Oh, terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our curricula will be available online, just to let you know, also.
Sally Baliani, I have two kids in the middle school, going into the middle school. In reference to the health curriculum, I watched a New Jersey State Republicans independent hearing today on the curriculum. Lots of professionals, pediatricians, child psychologists, educators, parents who spoke most not in favor of the depth of the curriculum. And one of the items that was brought to my attention, which I didn't really realize, was that although we in Wall may be allowed to opt out of the lesson or the class, the communication that was provided by the senators was that a lot of this curriculum is going to be woven into other classes, like ELA or math. And they, somebody, you know, referenced a book, you know, a reading book from an ELA class that would mirror some of the, of the subject matter from the health curriculum. So I just, I'm concerned with, you know, it would be fine to opt out of that one health lesson, but then how do parents who are not in support of the curriculum overall, and I was truthfully a little shocked at some of the things that they said would be covered, you know, how do you, how do you opt out if it's woven into every class that your child might, you know, might be taught? So maybe in September, we can, you know, learn a little bit more about that. But I think there is some concern in the, you know, the parent community about how deep this is going to go and how exposed your children are going to be throughout their learning from, you know, one subject to the next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen Duran, Wall Township. I'd just like to point out that other districts are doing something called an opt-in for those classes instead of an opt-out, which, given the general town constituency, might be a more viable plan. And I may not be able to attend that night, but I'd like that to be considered because the amount of objectionable material in the new curriculum is rather substantial, and opting in might be just actually more effective, given the town population that we have. I'd like to ask what the status is on the high school principal. And Joe, because of what you said to me when I was leaving the podium, I'm very concerned because I both heard the judge at the Oprah hearing in Betsy's case, and I read the written court order that awarded Betsy her attorney's fees. And Joe, you looked at me and said, "We're not paying them." Does that mean the attorney's paying them? You just, you just said, "No, there's no attorney's fees." I said, "Does everyone realize that Betsy won in their, Betsy won her lawsuit?"
Ms. Cross.
Oh, I, I-
What did Joe just say?
Ms. Cross, you were asked not to call out.
I am getting confused. I said, "Does everyone realize Betsy won her lawsuit?" And the court, the court has ordered the board to, the board or the attorney, I'm not sure who, really, to pay her attorney's fees. And, and Joe spoke out and said, "We're not." And I am confused by that. What did you say?
This is not, this is not question and answer. So please state your comments.
Okay. Well, my, my comment is, who's paying? My question is, who's paying Betsy's attorney's fees? And if you let it be someone other, it should be someone other than the board, in my opinion, but I think it should fall on the attorney for the, for the errors that were made. And I think Brian should be held accountable, too. And along with the employee affidavit that was submitted as to his wrongdoing and deliberate withholding of documents on the trailer investigation, I, I'm surprised that he's still here. And I have been for five years, as we've pointed out, the things that have been done wrong.
Clarify, there was no deliberate withholding of any records.
Well, you have an employee who said different.
Ms. Cross, please sit down. You're disturbing the meeting.
You have, the, well-
You're disturbing the meeting.
You have an employee who certified diff, you have an employee-
Excuse me one second. Ms. Cross, please sit down.
I think what Betsy's, what Betsy's holding up in my, behind me is, the, the whole lawsuit with Betsy Cross involved the trailer documents, not just who's paying for them, which was your budget item, you know, and then who's going to pay for the attorney's fees on the, the recent loss of the motion. But the fact that Brian's interview's not been produced, the, the investigation wasn't done well, and we don't have answers still on whether the, for example, basic questions, whether those trailers were used in Katrina and exposed to floodwaters and bought nonetheless.
Okay, that has been discussed, and that is not true.
It has. No, I said, "It's a question." I didn't say, "Make the accusation."
It's a question that's been asked and answered.
It has never been answered.
It has been answered.
And I've never had, I have, I have stood here and asked over and over again, and it has never been answered, and it's not answered in the investigation. And the documents that relate to it are ordered to be turned over. I'm waiting to review them. But I, I am really curious of who's going to pay Betsy's attorney's fees in this, whether it's going to come down on the board or the attorney. And did you discuss that at the meeting tonight? That was on your executive meeting, right? You were supposed to discuss it. And was it discussed without the attorney present? Curious. Inquiring minds want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment?
Good evening. Lisa Adam, Wall Township. I'm just following up. I stood up a couple months ago, speaking about school spirit and how I felt like we were lacking and we had work to do. And I promised at that meeting that I wasn't going to complain without putting in the work. So I just wanted to follow up. So I'm super excited and really grateful that the PTO is having a fall season kickoff tomorrow night. I think that's exactly what we're looking for. We are working really, really hard with the community. So since I made that statement, I have since become the president of the Wall Football Club. We are working extremely hard to get the team integrated into the community. The team has committed to holiday food drive. They've committed to a Christmas toy drive. We have charities that we are working with that have accepted our commitment for donation. Our new coaching staff is amazing. They are open and available and accessible. Our new athletic director has gone out of her way. We've had, you know, two scrimmages. She's been present at both. She has started a new Twitter. Everything is posted and recognized and supported. I have met with her. I have met with the superintendent. Both extremely positive meetings. We have spoken with the cheer club and the band, and we're looking to integrate the entire fall sports conglomerate together for one huge moment here that we have kind of been missing in the past few years. We have a new Facebook page. We have a new website. And we are on the way, like we promised we would be. So I just wanted to thank you guys for your support because it's, it's noticed. We know what we need from the community, but we also know you can't take without giving back. So we're working really hard to do so. So we wanted to thank you, and we're looking forward to a great year. The PTO has been amazingly supportive, so I think we're on the way to good things. So we've heard a lot of negative, but we're headed in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. Is there anybody else for public comment?
Betsy Cross, I live in Wall. So the record will reflect that the attorney walked in at nine-twenty-nine p.m. Just wondering where the attorney was, if you're going back into executive session. The document from the judge said that my attorney was supposed to be paid within twenty days, and that was today. But Mr. McKeever said he couldn't do it because he needed to talk with the board. Now, you had the opportunity on August eighth, because the judgment came through on August third, and you didn't go into executive session. So now, my attorney had to waste his time writing to the judge to now extend it again because this, this law firm, Athena Cornell's law firm, they always want extensions. And now they want to ring up more and more attorney bills that they want us to pay. And that's why they should be fired. So in looking at your attorney bills for the year, I mean, they were like two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, and you budgeted in twenty-twenty-one a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. So they're almost triple. And that's because we get a bad, bad legal advice. And you keep paying them. And you all voted tonight to pay them another ten thousand dollars when you shouldn't have. So we need this to stop, and that's why we need the Attorney General or Commission of Investigation to now turn over all these documents that were hidden in the bills from Mobile Lees, Ted Hopkins, Brian Smythe, whatever they said, Mr. Wren, Don Herbert was on the board, he's sitting back here. I mean, all those documents, whatever those interviews say, need to be turned over. That's why we paid a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand for a report. But instead, we got a report not on business letterhead, not signed, and Mr. Scirillo has now quietly retired. So there's a really big problem. And Mr. Malif, I think you're a smart guy. I think you're very smart. And somebody needs to lead this here and say, "You know what? Enough is enough." When you see these pictures, you know something was wrong. RIS was not interviewed. The, the company that walked off the job, what, because Brian Smythe didn't want them interviewed? Because he was with them? HTHI never interviewed. All these people that should have been interviewed were never interviewed, and you hid that. And it took till last Friday for me to get the documents. Last Friday. The judge told you last October, October fourteenth, you needed to turn them over. And you all sat here and were the problem. And luckily, Russell Garts is gone because he was terrible. So we got a couple new people that hopefully you'll say, "Yeah, I want to see those documents. I want to see those interviews." Because I will keep asking and keep writing to every state agency. Because people are contacting me, there was something seriously wrong. You were told by the architect who we paid forty thousand dollars to buy two new trailers, two new, and Brian went against it and bought two used filthy, disgusting trailers.
Ms. Cross, for the record, Mr. Smythe doesn't buy anything. The Board of Education votes to approve-
Right. And I want to see those interviews from Deirdre Kuchka, David Wren, the five people in that room. Eva Applegate is no longer here. Four of them are still here. That's what we want, that's what I want to see. Because when they say they had no idea what Brian was doing, Brian was tasked to inspect the filthy, disgusting-
Nobody said that.
Don't interrupt me.
Well, tell, tell the facts, Ms. Cross. Don't put words in other people's mouths that are not here.
So this says the attorney bills were two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand eight ninety-nine. And then last year, one ninety-six eight thirty-two. That's outrageous. That's because of bad legal advice and an attorney churning bills, and there'll be ethics complaints filed. And where did I sign for you to use my son's picture? Doesn't matter if he went to Wall, went to CBA, doesn't matter where he went. You were not authorized to use his picture in a lawsuit. And that picture, Ms. Athena Cornell knows was not my profile picture when that leak was up, when that link was up. And Adam Nasser, I've told you that. And I've said, "Have the attorney that just lost the case prove that that picture you keep saying was there, was there, because it wasn't." So you have another month, Mr. Nasser, because I told you this last month. He keeps spouting this off that my son's picture was there with the link, and it wasn't. So get your facts straight-
Thank you, Ms. Cross. Your time is up. Is there anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment. And again, for clarification, Mrs. Cross's Oprah complaint necessitated virtual hearing. While the virtual hearing was open to the public, Ms. Cross took the unprecedented step of posting the virtual link to her Facebook page without appropriately notifying the court in order to allow the court to make the necessary arrangements. At that time, Ms. Cross's Facebook profile picture was that of her son. Her son's picture appeared on each and every one of Ms. Cross's Facebook posts until she changed it. When the Facebook post was brought to the attention of the court, it had the picture of her son attached to it as her profile. When Ms. Cross requested that the post be removed from the court filing, the court asked both parties, and both parties consented it to the process, which they did. Thank you. Dr. Hanahan, did you have anything?
Yes, yes, I did. I just, I, there were some questions that I could certainly answer for some of the public. With respect to the Sign Out Summer Library at Old Mill School, I'm not familiar with the practice, but I can tell you that I will certainly look into it because anything that could encourage children to read, I am all about. So that is something that we can certainly look into, you know, for, for next summer. Additionally, there was a question regarding teaming and how it's going from the teacher's perspective. I would refer the parent that requested that information. That would be more of a building-based question where you would speak to the principal and start a dialogue at that point. I would also like, there was a reference to include the, Ms. Steiner's presentation regarding harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and with the new law at the third offense, and what do we do with the first and second offense? The, there's absolutely counseling that does take place, even when it is, oftentimes when it's not a HIB, sometimes it's in a conflict that does require a different form of counseling, or a social, educational practice with the counselors. It's, there's usually, there's, in most cases, there is a counseling component to it. There is also a question whether parents can be included in, whether the victim's parents or the student, the accused student's parents get together with the, with the students so they can understand the impact. And I- And I would mention that anytime that you are looking to have any kind of peer-to-peer or parent involvement, it truly does have to be acceptable and embraced by both parties. So that does complicate things from a counseling perspective and administrative perspective. So, I can tell you that in, in some cases, it is appropriate, and when both parties agrees, so there are some instances that I can think about where that has been actually utilized in practice. And of course, it would be age-appropriate as well. And I, I would like, I do have a, I just have an overall comment regarding the referendum, regarding, you know, student enrollment and the building in town. It is, yes, we're looking towards, moving towards a referendum, but I will tell you that it is incredibly important for the district to look, to study its current facilities, and that's what we have started to do, and look at our demographics and conduct updated demographics so that we can make sure that we are using our facilities efficiently. Because it is imperative that we do that, because, you know, we, we, we take very seriously the obligation to be prudent with the taxpayers' money. So I just wanted to circle back to that a little bit and just say that, you know, we are absolutely looking towards, you know, some efficient, efficient models so that we can be respectful of the taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. Adenizio.
Dr. Henderhand, just one question that kind of stood out, since we're moving, and maybe Mr. Smythe would have the answer.
I can address it.
Okay, thank you, you know what I'm talking about.
With regard to the food service, any funds that were on the prior point-of-sale service will be brought over to the new food service program. It'll be there.
Thank you. Ms. Cornell, did you have anything?
Just for purposes of clarification, with regard to the Oprah requests, the, the matter is still pending, however, the issues have not been the inability to provide documentation or hiding documentation or the like. All the documentation was provided, hundreds and hundreds of pages. What the issue at hand was, the redactions that were made, a portion of which were done with regard to individuals' names. The issue of the redactions is what was complained about to the court. The court reviewed the redactions, and the relief sought was to unredact all of the information. The court's analysis concluded that that relief would be denied in part because some of the redactions were necessary and appropriate, and others were granted in part because they were overly conservative. So in that situation, the court will give guidance in terms of what's appropriate to redact and what isn't, and then those documents are provided accordingly. That's what has been done in, in this matter. The case is still, has not closed and is still pending, and, and we will provide further updates as we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Please stop yelling out. This is a meeting, nobody else yells out. Any board members have anything?
I do.
Yes.
I've mentioned this before, and seeing that I sit up here tonight and had a family member's name read at random out of a list of 92 other people, I feel like it's important to mention that we are a community that cannot get board members to run for this position. Year after year, board members are elected through write-in when they don't serve, or they do serve, or they conduct interviews. If we continue to act this way as a community, we will continue to be a community that cannot get board members to serve their schools. I don't think that's who we want to be. We can be civil in here while discussing issues that we may disagree on. And there is no reason to bring up family members as a point of intimidation or bullying. And I also want to wish all of the teachers, all of the students, and all the families a happy first day of school.
Thank you, Mrs. Hotner. Ms. Slate?
Thank you. You know, we're going into a new school year. For me personally, I'm going to really be looking toward the future. There's a lot of energy in the community, I think there's a lot of people really excited to be going back to, you know, maybe a more traditional kind of an experience. I know that the PTOs across the community, at all of our schools, are really gearing up to get back into the swing of the things that we missed so much the last couple years. I want to encourage our families to get involved with your PTOs, it's a great way to get to participate with your kids and, and your kids' educators and, and some more fun things. I think there's a lot to look forward to. We've making a lot of progress, I do think that the new website is great, it's dynamic and fresh, and I think it's going to help kind of guide us in a really positive direction. I look forward to seeing what the kids are doing, and I hope everybody has a great year. I, I think we've got a lot of good in front of us, and I'm going to wish all the kids and our educators and our staff a great year. I hope everything goes well, and I'm sure we'll get to hear in September about all the great back-to-school things that happen.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Sanfilippo?
I have a sixth grader, and I know he is excited and fearful a little bit of going to intermediate school, he's got his little locker, he knows how to open it now. But I did want to mention that in part because they're excited about the teaming. What team are you on, what team am I on? So, you know, that was something that, you know, we had when I went into sixth grade, we had units, right? So same, same type of concept and everything like that. So, that's something I can report back, you know, to everybody. And I also just wanted to wish everybody a wonderful September and new school year 2022, 2023. And I wish everybody the best of luck and normalcy, which is great. It's going to be exciting to see things back to normal. That's all.
Thank you. Any? Yes?
I, I can echo that, Mr. Sanfilippo. Usually get to this point in the summer, and I say to myself, "I can't wait for the kids to come back," because it's just a, a crazy world during the summer, getting ready and, and trying to have everything as perfect as possible for the start of the school year. And thank you to all the, the staff or custodial maintenance teams that are, I mean, I've been staring at the floor all night, it looks beautiful. So, thank you to all of them. I wanted to comment on a few things here. The, I was glad to see the update on the HIBs. For the public, it's very difficult as a board member to go into HIBs. I know we've spoken about it before, but it's, it's probably one of the more difficult items that we have to deal with as board members, because there are such strict guidelines on what an actual HIB is versus a code of conduct violation. So, I, some of the changes that were up there, like letting the parents anonymously report and, and some of the other things, I, I think will make a little bit of a difference for us. But I, I always encourage people to get informed and, and look up what HIBs are, because it's, it's a lot more complicated than it probably should be, but it seems to be the way we do things in New Jersey. To also comment on Tracy's, her, her comment on looking at the demographics of the community and how it fits into a referendum. Using space efficiently is definitely something that's at the top of our list. It's no, it's no secret that our enrollment has fallen significantly in the past 10 or so years. It's been like that through a good portion of Monmouth County. At the same time, instructional methods change, we have more special needs, more resources out there, and they become more space-intensive. So, it becomes a balancing act, trying to, to match the needs of the students with the programs and then fit them into the buildings with the current outlines of the areas where the students attend. So, I, I, you know, I'm going to say it, I think a redistricting at some point is something that we need to seriously look at, because, you know, it's, it's, it's getting to the point where we want to be able to provide the best environment for our students, and we really need to, to dial in where we're at, who we're pulling in to where, and, you know, how we can, looking at the new building going on, fit that into our existing footprint. I'm going to close my last one, because to, to Ms. Cross's question on whether or not we had seen the, the ruling, and I, I did have the opportunity to read it, it's, it's very interesting, but the, the order didn't order the district to pay the attorney's bills. The order asked the district, district's attorneys and Ms. Cross's attorney to confer on the fees. And part of that is because there was a large volume, a very large volume, of documents that were produced. And in part, we, our redactions were upheld. In a large part, they were upheld. Yes, they were. And you know what? Some of them, you were correct on, and they should be unredacted.
Please stop yelling out.
There, there is no-
You're the only person that doesn't follow meeting rules.
There's no right- To, to, to paint it as a win or a loss is-
Please stop yelling out, you had your time.
It's not how this works.
Please stop yelling out.
The order asked the attorneys to confer-
All right, Ms. Cross, you've been warned, please leave.
When that-
Excuse me, Mr.-
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, please leave. You've been asked numerous times tonight, you have yelled out in an audience of 15, 20 people continuously, all night long, and have not respected anybody here. So please leave. We'll wait.
Let, let me continue.
All right.
Part, part of the difficult piece of this is that the opinion is not supposed to be published, so that right now, the judge, it literally says on the order, "Not for publication." So- So, please release it then. Please release it then. Go for it.
Please.
Thank you, but I'm looking forward to getting into the new school year. I'll let Athena handle it from here. Have a good night, everybody, and thank you for coming.
There, there's no response warranted, Adam. It's, it's very disruptive, and the continued interruption doesn't allow anyone else to speak, so it's, it, it doesn't need to be addressed.
With that, if there's nothing else, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll grant that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Anybody opposed? Nope. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening, and good luck to all our students and staff.